We're going to call this workshop to order. We have one item on our agenda for this work session, and that's our budgets. We're going to just dive right into it. Take it away, staff.
Certainly. So we're back this evening, both Rena and I. The goal for us this evening is just to finish covering some of the general fund topics, take one last look at some of the schedules, maybe some of the different schedules, and walk through them, and then hopefully come back in May the third, finish up with some of the other funds, and unless there's major concerns or issues, we may actually be able to finish pretty much right in time with the calendar, maybe even an extra week early. So last time we were here, we did review the general fund, and we spent a lot of time on the financial projections section, and I wanted to take a minute to go back to that section, which is Section 7, and just spend a minute or two on the actual debt service schedule, because there is a great deal of information in that. And again, that's Section 7, and that's found on Pages 12 and 13. There's three different charts, but as I mentioned, a great deal of information. So in this section, on Page 12, the top half of our chart includes all of our annual debt service or loan payments, and it's one of the ones that are currently issued. The bottom half of that chart shows right in line with the capital improvement projects. If we do all the capital improvement projects in each of the years that we have scheduled right now, we would be anticipating issuing bonds in '17, '18, '19, '20, and '21. Not only is the year there, but we've got the interest rate, the life of the bonds, how much total we would be borrowing, and then you'll see the annual debt service requirements. And again, this schedule reflects the annual payments that we're actually writing a check to do. The next page is more a look at, actually a snapshot of much information, but just as a reminder, at the city, we are not mandated by the state or prohibited within certain debt guidelines, other than our city debt policy or debt management policy. And we have three key items in that debt policy that we, criteria that we make sure that we meet. And on the general fund, one of the goals is that our total governmental debt as a percentage of total assessed value would be under 10%. Basically, we never want what we owe in our bondholders to exceed what our assessed value is on our tax base by more than 10%. Our government debt per capita, and when, it's just a fancy way of looking at our population, how much we have in debt outstanding, and we don't want to go higher than $1,000. And when we look at the general fund, when we look at either the operating revenue or expenditures, we don't want annual debt payments, those things that were in the first chart, to exceed 10%. So there is, we go clear back to fiscal year 2001. This chart has total assessed values. Our population, which has been fairly flat since fiscal year 01, about 37,000, and even through the out-years and with current estimates, we're not looking to have a tremendous population explosion over the next four years. Currently, we're at right around 39,662, and I think till I got to fiscal year '21, I had like a, almost like a 1% growth in each year, but still overall approximately 40,000 population-wise. Total outstanding debt, so this is, if we had to pay off our loan fully, if we're not just making these annual payments, but we had to cut the check right now today for everything outstanding, in fiscal year proposed '17, we would be at 21.5 million. And that 21.5 million assumes that we are going to complete all the projects as included in fiscal year '17 budget and issue new debt for approximately 6.4 million. So that kind of comparison-wise at home, it's like the total value, how much total mortgage you have on your home, if you had to pay it off right now, versus how much you pay every month or every week or every year. That equates to about 0.82% when we look at that compared to our assessed values. $533 is governmental debt per capita, and that would mean in our general fund in fiscal year '17, when we compare those annual debt requirements to total operating revenue, we'd be at 5.17%. So the good news in all of this is, when we look at proposed '17 budget, even with issuing 6.4 million new dollars, we're still within all of our debt policy guidelines. The bottom half is a new chart, and one that many have requested. Again, it's just a different way to look at a lot of the information combined in these two charts, and kind of take the approach backwards. If we actually issued everything that we have included in our five-year projections and capital improvement projects, at that point, at the very bottom, we're saying that we would incur or issue an additional 22.2 million in total debt outstanding, and our debt capacity would be that we could only do another 3.5 million. And again, that's, there's a lot of assumptions in all of these numbers, but I think in the past, people have said, you know, what's our debt capacity? Well, the answer is if we did everything exactly as it is outlined with those projects included, another 3.5 million by the time we get to fiscal year '21. If there's no other real questions on the debt, going to flip us back, apologize for all the flipping, to Section 1. Within the budget message section of the budget, there's lots of charts and good information. One of my, most of my favorite charts start on Page 22 for the general fund. And again, this is some of the information we looked at higher level last time, but instead of having two years of history and five years of projections, the charts here include current fiscal year '16 budget levels, where we think and estimate we're going to be by June 30 of this year, and proposed fiscal year '17 budget. If we look in total, total revenue in the general fund for proposed fiscal year '17 budget is 42.3 million. It's about 1% growth over the fiscal year '16 budget total of 41.9 million. The areas of change, the most change and the positive would be on property tax revenue. We're expecting about a 3% increase over the '16 budget. That's a combination of our current year actual trends, plus making the adjustment based on the information we received in our constant yield tax notice. Income and other taxes, slight increase, 1.3%, or just $47,000, and that's a result of additional monies that we anticipate receiving as our share of local tax income from the state. And a reminder that income and other taxes used to be commonly referred to as state share taxes, includes state income tax, admission and amusement tax, hotel motel tax. This chart includes just a synopsis. Within Section 3, if we looked, there will be a chart that gives separate detail on all the components that make up property tax revenue, a separate chart just on income and other taxes, and right down the line, and we'll look at those in just a second. The area of bigger, biggest percentage change difference would be in contributions and donations, 22%. Seems like a big percent, but it's only $29,000, and that's contributed to, we have an existing memorandum of understanding with our HPD staff in the library to get reimbursed up to $40,000 for a officer. That was not included in the contributions and donations in the fiscal year '16 budget, but that was approved in effect and in place for current year. It's not new, it just wasn't included at the time we did last year's budget. We did just, talked about briefly, the property tax revenue, 28.3 million. That is 67, just shy of 67% of our total 42.3 million in total tax revenue, total current revenue, I should say, and by far still the largest component in the general fund of any, of any funding source. Starting on Page 23 and on Page 24, it's the same information, it's just reflected a little differently, and instead of showing you funding sources or where the revenue, where we receive it from, it shows you what we're spending, the expenditure side. The chart on Page 23 is a, reflects and gives totals more from a departmental total. The chart on Page 24 will be more by category. And so on Page 23, we'll see that for fiscal year '17 budget, 42.3 million total in proposed budget and expenditures. When we compare that in grand total over fiscal year '16 budget numbers, it's 41.8 million. It's a 1.1% growth. Again, kind of mirrors exactly the growth that we're anticipating on the revenue side. The largest component, when we look at departmental standpoint, we'll see public safety at the top amounts to 20, just shy of 21 million, 20.9, out of the total 42.3, which is 49.6% of the total. This is the operating expenditures only, does not include any capital. And when I say public safety in this category, it's just police and fire. I have included with this chart description on like five items. Again, didn't give great detail, didn't have a whole lot of space or room to provide detail on every single line item, but rather looked really at the dollar differences and where the biggest dollar changes were from fiscal year '17 proposed budget to fiscal year '16 Two of those items would be police and fire. We've mentioned them both briefly before. In the police department, we do have an additional four officers that are reflected in the salary lines. That is due to a current year grant that we've already approved, that, the grant, even though we approved it in fiscal year '16, we didn't have it, the dollar impact in the salaries included at the point that we did fiscal year '16 budget. Also, within the police department, basically rising costs and the benefits, and about $52,000 in other costs, but again, as a reminder, we are looking at purchasing body worn cameras for all of our officers, and that cost is about $54,000. So that's pretty much the difference in the police department from budget year to budget year. Fire, we had mentioned, I think the other, last week and maybe even a couple weeks ago when Chief Loar was at the table, but we have some additional costs, additional items that we've included in the operating side this, in fiscal year '17 budget, specifically for maintenance costs for buildings and structures, some operating repairs that we need done over to training tower. In both of those areas, we also have by annual testing, medical testing, so you know, their budget from year to year, both of those go up and down, because one year we have to include those costs, and next it comes back down. Flip the page. I'm going to look at those same numbers, total proposed expenditures for the general fund, 42.3 million, just like on the prior page. This time though, instead of looking at any individual department, we're actually looking at category. So at the very top, you see total wages and benefits of 28.4 million. 28.4 million is 67.2% of our total expenditures. So we're not looking at an individual department, we're actually looking at where we're spending our money. We are spending 28.4 million, or 67% on our staffing. The other, the second largest category would be on contracted services, about 10.3% or just shy of 4.4 million dollars. One of the other major differences I just wanted to point out just one more time, it's the next to last item, and it's our general fund transfers that we do to our capital improvement fund. And again, that's just the fund whose ongoing projects that we're not going to use bond financing or other sources, we're actually utilizing pay-go monies. What I want to do, just so that it helps people in navigating and maybe understanding a little bit better, because it's not, it's not anything additional that we haven't covered, but if we go to Section 3, starting on Page 7. All of Section 3 is strictly general fund again, just another way, another way we break down all the information. It has how we actually ended the year, our audit for fiscal year '15. Again, we include both our current year fiscal year '16 budget and our fiscal year '16 projections where we now think we're going to end the year, and compare that to our proposed fiscal year '17 budget. But on Page 7, you'll see the title at the top is property tax revenue. And again, for fiscal year '17 budget, that's 28.3 million. It ties back to the charts that we saw and looked at in summary form. And as you flip the pages, you'll see that each page and each sheet has a little bit more detail, like I indicated on revenue. Page 15 is where we start to give information in the general fund by department. And one of the things that we do for every individual department, and that our managers all do an excellent job to provide, is we do a program overview and objectives, just some narrative and an opportunity to provide data on what we're doing and our goals, as well as some performance indicators. So it's not all just numbers. Of course, we'll include one or two, sometimes it just depends on the division on how large it is, a snapshot of just that department or division. And when I say division, when we actually discuss the engineering group, while it's not just the engineering department, it's the whole division that rolls up to that manager, includes parks and recs, municipal stadium, other things under the general fund. And then we include a staffing summary on every individual department as well. Just want to remind everybody, last time we touched upon it briefly, in fiscal year '17 budget, we did include potential new revenue source, and I believe both Valerie and myself mentioned it last time, and that's red light camera. I just want to say, I know it's been quite a while since Chief Holtzman was here, and I think the last thing, and last directive was that he was going back, and he was going to have staff start the process of completing a study, and then was going to task everybody with coming back and providing an update. And I believe what we'll do is give Acting Chief Kuyfer and Captain Langston an opportunity at our work session very soon, just to come back and provide a complete status update on everything, all the steps that have been taken since they were last here, and then get direction and feedback on moving forward. One of the other things that we do every budget cycle, we have a new policy that was done about two years ago, and that's our general fund agency contribution policy. And I just want to take the opportunity to spend a few minutes on that chart. I know in total, we've already looked at grand total, but I'm going to let Rena cover that chart, and it's in Section 3 on Page 57.
And as you review this chart, you'll see for 2016 budget, that it was 190,000 in the budget, but for 2017, it's 205,000. But the funding for all the core agencies remained the same. The only thing that was different for '17 is that we added 5,000 for the Washington County Historical Society. And right now, we still have 10,000 in unspecified, so I guess we will decide what we'll do with that at a later date. Also, when that 5,000 was added, that was done in October 2015. We amended the policy to add the historical society to it.
So at that time, we left, the total funding was the same as what was established in the policy for the prior year. It was a total of 205,000. Instead of having seven organizations set aside as core agencies or those groups that we kind, we've committed that we were going to continue to fund, in fiscal year '17, we changed that from seven to eight. Originally, when we did the policy, the very first year, we were going to leave 15,000 as a contingency, which would have been for current fiscal year '16, but as you all will recall, we had numerous conversations. Since that time, we've had several emergency items, one of which was emergency boiler repair for our building here at City Hall. So we have utilized that because it was an overall contingency. But for fiscal year '17, you know, when we came in October, it was 205,000. So we've left the allocation the same to all the groups as current fiscal year '16 levels. And just as a reminder, what we will do, once the budget has been approved at the end of May, we will actually send out a memo to all eight of the agencies, letting them know that the budget has been approved, what the funding level is, and what we require and need from them in order to distribute those funds. I think for the most part for us, that we've pretty much covered the big key items and the changes in the general fund from one budget cycle to another. Just want to give, pause and kind of take a minute to see if there's any, any issues or concerns, some topic within the general fund you would like us to cover in a little bit more detail. Again, my goal is, when we come back, I know we're off next week, or next Tuesday, but when we come back on May 3, to really be fairly finished with the general fund and move forward, we would have four other funds to cover with you. Our goal would be to start those conversations then on May the 3.
I just want to make sure that I understand for folks that are out there listening, on Page 6 on Section 3, if I am correct, the combined city-county tax rate that we have under this proposed budget is less than the tax rate that we had a decade ago in 2004, 2005?
That is a correct statement. So on that page, there is history that dates back to fiscal year '90 on our tax rates, city, county, and state.
Sorry, what page you on?
Page 6, Section 3. And also, for those that are listening that were at the North End thing, the answer to the question, if I'm correct here, is that the large taxing decrease occurred in 2010, 2011, when the county changed its method of taxation to the municipalities, and our tax rates stayed level until we were forced to get them back in 14, 15.
Correct. And then that very next year was when we took the biggest reduction in our triennial assessment, so it was a back-to-back year. We took an 11% reduction.
But there's always this feeling that every year, the only thing the city does is raise taxes, and that's very untrue. And not, not only that, but if we're going back 25 years, we're two and a half cents above where we were in 1989 and 1990. Am I reading it correctly?
20.
20 cents, excuse me, 20 cents in 25 years.
And just a reminder, every penny increase that we do on the tax, on the real property tax rate side, generates $252,000, and that is based on fiscal year '17 assessed values in a memo that we received in February from the state assessor's office.
And those combined tax rates that we talked about going up 20 cents for 25 years, a substantial portion of that were increases in the county and the state tax rates.
Yes, correct.
Does anyone else have any questions for staff? Anything we've covered tonight, or anything else? Certainly we'll have more opportunities to engage and discuss. I think there's three areas. I think that there's three areas that I've at least shared to some degree, and I think that we've at least talked about to some degree, that I'd like to explore on the revenue side. I know they're not always popular. But the first is, in fact, we have this proposal from staff associated with addressing some stormwater management in the Hamilton Run. And I think what we've seen in the last couple of years is really two, very different approaches to the state's mandate on stormwater management. The one approach is, you simply don't do anything, and you know, you tell the state to go pound sand, and you don't get anything from that. And the other is that if you can figure out a way to prioritize and leverage, that the state comes along with some funding. And be that as it may, I know two years ago, we looked at it and said, you know, we don't have the appetite for it, but in those two years, staff's been able to identify some funding from the state to bring to the table for these types of things. And I guess all I'm saying is, you know, like it or not, whether it's Hamilton Run or some other, you know, aging stormwater management facility, we as government have accepted those bags over time. We're going to have to do something for it, and if we can do something about it with some city money that is able to leverage a larger portion of state money, then we need to at least have a conversation about some type of stormwater management fee to accomplish that, because not getting that state money simply means that every other jurisdiction that does do something will get that state money. So that's one area I'd like to explore. The second that I brought up before is this utility tax. You look here and you see our property tax, you see our, our personal property tax, and if you look at how local jurisdictions, again, tax utilities in the state of Maryland, it's a fairly unique situation. The state sends you the form, says here's what the valuation that utility is, and most jurisdictions will use just the personal property amount and apply it to that entity. So it's different, and maybe you put it in the context of, you got this commercial building, and you get a tax bill for your property, for that commercial building. You also get a personal property tax bill for the equipment and the pertinences in that building that have valuation, right? But utilities typically only gets one of those two. You don't take those two rates and combine it. You don't take one of those two rates, i.e. the property rate, and apply it. So in effect, that utility isn't impacted by an actual property bill for that, they're just impacted with a personal property bill. And the argument often for the reason you do that is because they don't really have property. But if you look at some jurisdictions over time, I clearly note that they have property, that you know, that there is a valuation there, and that both should be applied, just as you would apply it to any other commercial entity. And so I only bring that up as another item that I think we should look at. The last is an item I brought to staff, that was really brought to me a month or so ago, and I know, and I don't know if staff's looked at it, but when we signed into the state program, and we said, hey, state, we're going to enroll in your, in your retirement program, and the state says, okay, you want to enroll, you got to buy in, you know, and it's X million dollars to buy in, and so you've been paying on that. And the way I understand it is, you know, every jurisdiction has some amount that is enrolled in the state plan to pay into. And let's say ours is $3 million. Well, you can either buy in upfront, or you can pay on that over time, and most pay on it over time because you don't have the money to buy in right away. But one of the ideas that has been floated to me, that I think we should explore, is we're buying into that over a period of time at an interest rate that may be higher than we can, than we can get directly, and if we can get a better interest rate through, through lumping that into one sum, we can save money on the interest rate side of things, especially for the number that we have to absorb as one of the largest jurisdictions that has bought into it. So those are three areas that I think are, you know, some degree of revenue enhancement that aren't huge, you know, they're certainly not going to fix the issue, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, you could be looking in the number of about a half million dollars a year, you know, if, you know, you were. of about a half million dollars a year, you know, if, if, you know, you were to do those. And at least one of those cases, that there's a direct return of being able to leverage some of that money for other monies, for some of your capital projects that you've identified, especially on, on the storm system. So those are three areas I'd be interested in.
Thanks. Anyone else? I really appreciate staff's hard work on this and we'll adjourn this work session and reconvene at seven P M.